Thank you.
I just wanted to know now so I don't have to have to talk in front of the crowd.
Okay.
Yeah, you?
Yeah.
That's good.
Hold on, okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Uniontown's regular city council meeting of April 4th, 2024. Roll call.
And I'm pinch hitting tonight, so I apologize if I mess anything up. I appreciate your indulgences there. Councilman Billy?
Here.
Councilman Winfrey?
Here.
Councilman Brown?
Here.
Councilman Thomas?
Here.
Mayor Gerke?
Here.
All rise to the pledge of allegiance.
Point allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have special guests this evening. Michael Scott from the Herald Standard for speaking about the Founders' Day event. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, it's that time of year again, and we've started the planning for this year's founding day festival. And I just kind of wanted to fill you in from feedback that we had last year and where we're progressing to this year. As you know, the last couple of years, we've shut down Main Street and we've, from Gallatin to Morgantown, left Morgantown intersection open, and then from Morgantown down to the flags, we've shut that down. Car show was down that way, the vendors and food trucks and music and everything was up on this end. Feedback that we received for two years of doing that was that people were not comfortable crossing Morgantown with that intersection being open. So, we decided to pull from there, and this year, as we did the very first year that we started the founding day festival, we're planning on moving it down to Marshall Park. And actually having the festival Saturday, June 29th at Marshall Park, setting up Marshall Park to look similar to how the artist rendering is for the rejuvenation of Marshall Park, with the stage going in down at the southwest end. And so we'll need, I guess there's power, at least there was power at that southwest corner, and for their sound system there. Car show will be moved to the parking lot at the library. They've given us permission, and they're going to close the library on that Saturday. They've given us permission to use that parking lot. We're asking permission to use the city parking lot that's on the other side of the library, on the Church Street side, and that the car show would go there. So, and we would be closing Jefferson from the, from the bridge to Church Street, leaving Church Street open. Jefferson would then be one lane traffic available for emergency if that had to happen. And then the park would, the park would be all set up for the event. I know we've been working with Angela as far as part of our meetings and that sort of thing, and for what needs to be done at the park. Met with Frederick and with code enforcement and the police department, and we looked at the park and went through that, and there's obviously mowing and tree trimming and things like that that has to be done, but I think we're going to be in great shape. I think it's going to look really good. And then we had one of our meetings today, and the other, the other thing that was, the other development that happened, nine times, every year, the fireworks over Fayette was done on Sunday, the day after the, that we had the festival. And this year, we're going to be able to have the cities run at the beginning of the festival on Saturday. We'll have the festival on Saturday, then Saturday night, the fireworks will cap everything off, so it'll be really good. So, what I'm here today to do is just ask the city council for permission to use Marshall Park this year and that parking lot across the street from Marshall, across Jefferson from Marshall, for the founding day festival. And again, the net proceeds from the festival will be coming back to the city and to the Marshall Park rejuvenation fund for seed money for grants and that sort of thing. I think, Crystal, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're almost at $9,000, if not just over $9,000 so far. And we'd be, we're planning on hopefully being able to hit that $12,000 mark and hoping that that money will help the city be able to go for bigger money to be able to get that park rejuvenated and done. And so, I'll leave you guys with that, and then somebody can get back to me with everything's a go, which I think it probably will be, but we'll move on from there. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Appreciate all you're doing. Comments on agenda items only? Yes.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Rossi, and I work for Child Evangelism Fellowship, and we, I have a handful of churches who want to partner with us this year to host a community vacation Bible school on June 7th, 8th, and 9th. So, on the 7th and 8th, we're going to have from 1:00 to 3:00 PM our Bible school at Lafayette Elementary, and we're requesting permission to use Bailey Park from 5:00 to 7:00 PM on those evenings and from 3:00 to 5:00 on June 9th. So, this is a free event for children ages 5 to 12 to come, have learned Bible stories, songs, games, snacks. So, just requesting permission for Bailey Park on those three days.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rossi was commenting on agenda item 72, if anyone was interested in that. Any other comments on agenda items only? Yes.
On the agenda 82, I'll discuss this on my report as well, I wanted to explain a little about what a task force is and why we're creating it. The Housing Alliance of PA created the five-step fast-track blight planning process. It's a five-step process to develop a remediation plan, to pursue grant funds, to handle the blight in the City of Uniontown. And one of the steps, which I believe is step three, is to create a task force. This task force does not make decisions on behalf of the city. It does not, it's not incorporated. It's just a group of entities that would be those agencies that would move the plan forward. And so, those folks that we are asking to be appointed to that board would meet three or four times to help us develop and identify the areas of most blight, so then we can pursue grant funds.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Any other comments on agenda items? Yes. Just state your name, and when you get to the podium, please. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Grant Candibar. I'm with the Garland Company, and I'm just here to comment on agenda item 100, which is the roof bid. It's my company, Garland. We're a roof manufacturer, and we've recently done some projects at Fayette County at the courthouse, the connector project, the annex building. We've done some work locally at the Ohio Island School District and Albert Gallatin as well, but one of our approved contractors is submitting a bid for the roof bid this evening, and just wanted to recognize myself as being here for any questions you may have regarding the bid. They did, you know, after inspection of the roof, your scope didn't exactly fit what I thought was suggested or necessary. There's a couple of things like, for instance, asbestos-containing materials.
If I could just stop you, and the reason is because before we open these bids, I don't want to get too far in the discussion. That could have implications on, on your bid.
Sure, absolutely.
If we have any questions, we can address those at that moment, if that would be okay with you?
Absolutely.
Not to cut you off, I just don't want you to talk yourself out of the joint.
Sure, no problem. Absolutely. So, yeah, any question on the bid, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments on agenda items? If not, I have just a few items that I'd like to bring up. Number one, Community Cleanup Day, April 27th. That's a Saturday, the last Saturday of April. That's one of the most exciting parts of the city here. We enjoy going out and cleaning up. Pastor Winfrey and I will go out and assess the situation that, the week before, to see what we need to clean up, and the people from the garbage company, they're always really good about, they, you know, they're through the streets and they know where things are. We're going to have a mobile garbage truck going around picking up garbage. We're going to have one located at St. Paul's Lutheran Church. That's where we're going to be gathering at 9:00. Try to be there a little bit earlier. We'll supply gloves, vests, garbage bags, probably some water, too. Then we'll have another garbage truck stationed down at the sewage plant for drop-off, and we're working with the county hard-to-recycle days, and it's listed here on the, on the flyer. You can pick one up here at City Hall, and it's on our Facebook page explaining it a little more detail than what I'll get into, but it's an exciting day. Get out and make your community look a little bit nicer. We seem like we get a lot done that day just for four hours, and more people, the more we'll get done. So, that's, that's just an exciting day, exciting day for me and the rest of the city at that. Another good event that's going to happen this Sunday up at Venue 67 on Conestell Street. Empty Bowls is Community Action puts that on, and Mr. Billy, maybe you can expand on that a little bit. Your wife, I think, heads that up if I'm not mistaken.
So, a very important event for the community, Empty Bowls. It will be April 7th, which is this Sunday. It is from 12?
11.
11 to 3. Very important. What this does is it raises funds for the local food bank. Also, what it also does is it showcases local restaurants who provide the soup, and it's also a contest as well. Many different baskets, raffle baskets, and of course, I'll be doing the 50/50. This will be, I think, like the fourth year running for me doing that. So, if, if you have the time and you're, and you're in Union Town and you're in the Conestell Street area, please stop over at Venue 67. Such an important event. This event is held nationally, Empty Bowls. I can't stress this enough, to be a part of this and be part of the community, and this is where you can really help the communities being part of the community action fundraisers.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman. And I attended my first one last year. It was a really good event. I thought I'd just come in for 10 minutes and leave. I think we were there for two hours, so it was just really a good time. That's all I have.
All right. We will proceed through the normal agenda, be it resolved by the city, city council of the City of Union Town to receive the report of the treasure for the month of March 7th, 2024, being the same as hereby filed and received. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to accept the minutes of the March 7th, 2024 regular council meeting, being the same as hereby accepted and filed. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council, city council of the City of Union Town, council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the City of Union Town. February 2024 invoices, general fund, $79,990.40; sewer fund, $71,874.81; recreation, $1,204.69; recycling, $5,403.18; highway, $16,683.48; off-street, $1,768.75; and library, $10,568.74. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town, this is for a tax assessment refund to Gallatin Partners Incorporated for $990.20. This would be a request to authorize that refund. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
I'm going to abstain. Anytime we're going to come up, any resolution that deals with any parcel number information that deals with assessment information with the county, my place of business, so that is the reason I'm abstaining today.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to approve Faith Assembly's Community Bible verse Study Event to be held at Bailey Park on June 7th through the 9th, 2024. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to approve the resignation of City of Union Town Street Department employee Virgil Hendrickson effective March 26th, 2024. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to accept the resignation of City of Union Town Patrolman Matthew Morelli effective March 14th, 2024. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to accept the resignation of City of Union Town Patrolman Rhett Geary effective March 20th, 2024. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to ratify approval of advertisement to begin City of Union Town Police Department Civil Service testing. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to approve Wendy O'Brien of Prodan and O'Brien Law Office as solicitor for the Civil Service Commission at the rate of $125 per hour. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to approve the quote for no parking and handicap signage with poles from U.S. Municipal in the amount of $2,011.40. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
So, just to let everybody know, this, this resolution here is to bring our inventory stock up as we ramp up, you know, freshening up downtown as far as the painted lines, curbs, turning lanes, all of our signage. This is to get our stock back up. Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to approve the quote from Thomas Proter for installation of new drainage and infield grading at Bailey Park Fields totaling $14,453. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
I'm abstaining, ma'am, remember.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to appoint Shannon Wood as designated signatory for all open community development block grant contracts effective immediately. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to approve the creation of a blight remediation task force to assist in the five-step remediation process. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to appoint the following members to the blight remediation task force. Mallory McCune, Fayette County Community Action; Frederick Hamper, City of Union Town Code Enforcement Officer; Matthew Thomas, landlord and resident of the City of Union Town with prior code experience; David Mulcan, threshold program; Crystal Simmons, Director of the City of Union Town Redevelopment Authority; and Andrew French, Fayette County Redevelopment Authority. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
I would just like to ask one question. I'm all for, but I just wanted to ask Crystal, of course, this is a task force to look for issues around the neighborhood. Will this task force offer our elders, who, let's say, they may not be able to keep up with their property, that's why their property is in that condition, will you offer services or resources for homeowners to fix their properties up that are not able?
This is a group that will assess the city to determine where the blight is at, and then we will put a plan together. So, the actual $25,000 grant is to prepare a physical blight remediation plan. Now, that can be considered and indicated, and there is an actionable item, but at this point, that group would only be reviewing and assessing the actual blight in the area with the next steps. So, it definitely can be considered, and, you know, any comments to be considered, who we could, but, right, not directly at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to enter into terms of engagement with Beareen Company Certified Public Accountants with the City of Union Town to provide accounting assistance in adjusting the book of accounts with the objective to be able to prepare a working trial balance from which financial statements can be prepared for year-end 12/31/2023. Their staff rates range from $60 to $170 per hour, with the majority of service provided to be at a rate of $85 to $120 per hour, with an estimate of 110 to 160 hours of service. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to authorize 2024 annual testing, air sampling, and maintenance of the fire department's breathing air compressor from Whitmer Public Safety for a cost up to $1,500. Councilman Billy?
So, these next few resolutions that are dealing with the fire department, this is all routine continuing maintenance. This is to get this, so we can go ahead and schedule this service. So, not necessarily are we releasing these funds at this moment, but this is so that we can get those scheduled, and then we'll go ahead and release the funds. Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to authorize 2024 annual testing and service of fire pumps and apparatus components from Fast of the Allegheny Mountains at a cost of up to $1,800. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to authorize 2024 annual testing and service of City of Union Town Fire Department aerial device and associated components on ladder truck number one from command fire apparatus for a cost of up to $1,700. Councilwoman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to approve to waive the peddler's fee for the vendors of the City of Union Town's farmer's market being held at Bailey Park for the 2024 season. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to approve to advertise for the position of full-time code enforcement officer at $22 per hour for up to 35 hours per week. Councilman Billy?
So, before we take the vote on, on this resolution, my future plans, I'd just like to let other members of council know, my future plans, the mayor and I have talked about these plans along with the chief. I'm looking to move this code enforcement position directly under the mayor, directly under the police department. And eventually, we have, down the road, we have some talk, there's a little, you know, a little premature right now to actually get into the meat of that discussion. But this is a way that we could better, police have better enforced our codes, go in this direction. Quite frankly, when we're looking at each department in the budget, the police department is the only department in the city that is able to absorb this position. So, and basically, what this is doing is, right now, what we're using is we're moonlighting with the police department that position where we're using a patrolman. And so, that's kind of like on the same direction that's going to be not actually a patrolman. We're not hiring another patrolman in, in, in that position for code enforcement, although we do have future plans for two new hires after we get all the civil service testing done. So, that's kind of like my plans, you know, just kind of like thinking out loud with everybody on that. So, this 35-hour a week, it is flexible. We will be advertising here, turn of the week.
Yes.
So, we'll be advertising for this position at the turn of the week. You'll be working directly with the mayor and the chief of police and the redevelopment authority with those, with those three heading up. So, yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Union Town to approve, to approve to advertise and authorize K-2 engineering to prepare a request for proposals for street painting of the downtown business district and surrounding areas.
Before we go ahead and call roll on this, this is, this is a proposal of mine, and after talking with downtown businesses and residents that, that frequent the downtown area, frankly, anyone that drives around downtown can see that we have a severe delay on getting our street painting done. That's all the yellow curbs, all of the turning lanes, and all the crosswalks. What this RFP, this request for proposal, does is put the fillers out there for the project. The project is going to be, start with the downtown business district. It's going to focus on Main Street, Church Street, and also on Conestell Street. So, these, and that's getting into where we're talking into the surrounding areas, our targeted areas. We're going to put this RFP out, see what comes back. This is... This is not something that, um, we have to do. But one thing that is necessary to do to, uh, get us caught back up and back on a regular, uh, maintenance schedule of, of keeping those, uh, all those, uh, safety features of the city. Again, this, I, I just want to stress this, this is to put the feelers out to see what this project would cost us and if the city's able to do it. Um, and, and then we'll hear more about it. This does not, um, this is, this does not commit the city to make a move on this. This is just to put the feelers out. Uh, so, yes. And we, we have very limited information on this. This will be advertised, this is on purpose. This will be advertised. Uh, and once this information comes out publicly, everybody will have a fair opportunity to put a proper proposal together. And we sit here and talk about exactly outside of the little bit that I've talked about, uh, I, I think that kind of makes it unfair. Uh, so, uh, K-two is preparing that, our city engineer is preparing that proposal requirements. And then we'll release that for, for the public and, and we'll, we'll get back what we, the information we need to.
Uh, Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Thank you. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into an agreement between the City of Uniontown and One Voice, One Community for property lease of Colick Run Park. Uh, Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Mr. Bassler, uh, at, at the end of the meeting, would you like to speak a little bit about what your plans are with this, or is this still a little early? I'm really confident to bits to tell people what this is about. It's a little sneak peek on it? Okay. I can't wait for this.
I'm sure this will work out really well. Terry and I have talked numerous times and been working to try to get this put together that works for both parties, and I think we've got something that works for both parties. And we're excited to have you jump on board and make our city a better place to live. And thank you for all you do, Terry.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to introduce bill number one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven, proposed ordinance number one thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven, an ordinance of the City of Uniontown Fayette County, Pennsylvania, memorializing, confirming, and reinstituting the per capita tax, repealing all inconsistent ordinances, and providing an effective date. Um, Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Going to abstain. And for the same purposes as, uh, my previous abstention.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
And, and just, just as an explanation point on that, that doesn't actually change anything that the city currently has in place. It's just memorializing the fact we have, so we have a current ordinance that reflects that. So taxes are not increasing as a result of that ordinance. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the proposal from Joseph Walkus for grass cutting services for city parks and public areas beginning March seventeenth, twenty twenty-four through September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. City parks and areas included Bailey Park, Sheepskin Trail, Grant Street Park, Marshall Park, Mill Street Park, Union Town Cemetery, Fireman's Statue, Kensington Island, nine eleven lot, Five Corners, City Hall, Penn Street Garage, Church Street Parking Garage, Fountain Area. Terms for services will be for removal of trash, tree limbs, or any debris in grass area to be mowed, along with cutting, trimming, and leaf removal of twelve properties weekly or as needed at a cost of nineteen thousand six hundred dollars paid bi-weekly. Uh, Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Uh, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve to authorize accounts payable clerk Desiree Walkus online banking access for internal, internal control purposes. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, that Ty Mickens is hereby appointed a full-time officer after successfully completing a six-month probationary period for the City of Uniontown effective April fifth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Abstaining, family member.
And Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize payment of compensated absences to Robert Smith as follows. Eighty-five, six days, six hundred and eighty hours, twenty-five vacation days, two hundred hours, six personal days, forty-eight hours, for a total of nine hundred and twenty-eight hours, times the hourly rate of twenty-nine eighty-six for a total of twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and eight cents. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Yes, and I'd also just like to congratulate Mr. Smith, uh, with thirty-four years of service to the city. Thank you very much, sir.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire where, where, I apologize where, where, where. Gladman as the City of Uniontown Basketball League Coordinator for Grant Street Park for the twenty twenty-four season at a salary of four thousand eight hundred dollars for the season. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Amy Yiz, Yiz, Yizoro as part-time assistant basketball league director for Grant Street Park for the twenty twenty-four season at fourteen dollars per hour for up to twenty-five hours per week. Uh, Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Tiffany Millie Blahoe as supervisor for City of Uniontown Summer Parks Program at Grant Street Park at fourteen dollars per hour for up to twenty-five hours per week. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Okay, yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Yep. Uh, to be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Jackie Campbell as clerk two in the office of accounts and finance at a starting salary of fifteen dollars and fifty cents per hour effective March eleventh, twenty twenty-four. There will be a ninety-day probationary period with full benefits upon successful completion of probation. Uh, Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved, actually, do you need to open bids then? Is council? Let me technically, we should get the motion to open bids. Are we, is there a motion to open the bids for the roof?
I'd like to make a motion to open the bids.
Okay, there's a motion to open the bids. Is there a second?
Say.
Okay, go ahead and proceed with the opening bid. The actual agenda item is to approve the roof bid, which, as Councilwoman Billy had pointed out, would be pending additional review by council. So there's a bid from Redwood Construction of Washington, PA. Redwood Construction of Washington, PA. The total prevailing wage total price would be ninety-two thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. Ninety-two thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. Received a second bid. The second bid is from Commercial, uh, I'm sorry, TMR Roofing. And the total bid for, from TMR Roofing, it also indicates Commercial Industrial Institutional from Salzburg, PA, would be three hundred ninety thousand five hundred dollars. Three hundred ninety thousand five hundred dollars.
So I'd make a motion to table, uh, table this bid upon further review of council.
I second that.
Yeah. So there's a motion to table. Hold on one second, let me get organized here.
May I ask why you want to table the, this most, why you want to table a bid right now?
Well, I think it'd be, uh, wise for us, uh, being that the bids are so far off, uh, a three hundred thousand dollar difference. It's not always best for a municipality to go with the lowest bidder just because it's the lowest bidder. Okay, we, you know, I would like to further review the bid specs on this because it's so far out. We go with the ninety-two thousand, but I'm not, and, and I, and there's no way for us to foresee this. We don't know what the, uh, extra cost could be. You know, you, lowest bidder, and then there's change orders, there's change orders, there's change orders. I, without looking at the bid specs and looking at both packages, I think that it's better. Uh, one thing I don't want to do is, is be on the line for one hundred thousand dollars of, of, of a city coffer and, and not have exactly what we need. This roof project, this roof is a very old roof. Ninety-two thousand could be in line. But I, I don't know, for me, being so far off, yeah, I'd like to further look into that. And I think that on these contracts like this, I think it'd be wise for us to do it. Um, we have some other projects that we're going to be doing. So this, this project right here for city, for City Hall was an insurance audit. And there was two roofs in the city buildings that were, that were nicked, that were tagged for, or flagged for roof replacement. This affects our li, our liability insurance for the city. So we, and we've, we've been kicking it down the road. We have to do something now, uh, with City Hall. Um, the other project, I believe, was, is the sewage department's roof. Uh, that's going to be something that we're going to be looking at doing. Uh, we are budgeted for this. We also have a fire department that needs a roof as well, which I'd like to, um, also get on the books for forward movement in twenty-five. Uh, that's my reasoning for that. I don't know how you all feel about it, but I think on this, you know, especially because we have so much of a difference. There's a reason why there's a difference. I think we need to find out what, which one is which.
And, and a project of this scope was not uncommon, that there would be, and that's why the code actually requires bids to be held for at least sixty days to give council in situations like this, the opportunity to review them. The bids obviously will be available to all council members to review and look at, familiarize yourself with. But that would be not inappropriate to, to table it for now.
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to, you know.
I think too, like, it gives us time that we can sit back and we can talk a little more, and if there's, if there's anything, questions or anything. Because as, as we, you know, you guys are in your first year, as you continue to go through, you're going to be, more of these will come up. You're going to have better understanding of it. And maybe somewhere down the road, we might not need to table something. But I think for me, the three hundred thousand dollar difference is a big key. Like, I want to know why the, the one company is. And I, I think maybe, uh, the gentleman was alluding to that. But then I think that, you know, uh, we review, we'll have questions for them. We can always reach back out.
I definitely agree to table it because this all should have been discussed before it was even on the agenda in the first place.
But this, well, without the bids, we can't, we have got to, we have to receive the bid and open it without talking about.
Okay, okay. That's what I'm just trying to get an understanding. Thank you. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
All, all good?
Okay. No, my clue is, I'm just trying to figure out what's going on, sir. Okay? Let's not be disrespectful.
The, this is a motion to table, um, the approval of a bid for the replacement of a new roof at City Hall. Um, Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the purchase of street sweeper parts from ODB Company for the amount of two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the City of Uniontown Police Department to begin testing the buildup positions of two full-time police officers. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council, oh, that, we're not doing that.
Good tip?
Yep, we're good. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, time for our monthly reports. Director of the Redevelopment Authority, Ms. Simmons.
Good evening, council. So for the community development block grant program, we held a CDBG status meeting, March twenty-second, and we have our recurring meeting on April twenty-sixth. I'm holding the recurring meetings. I'll open a conference lineup for about ten or fifteen minutes if anyone joins or has questions. I just want to make myself available. I don't, uh, we, we've kind of gotten the program back on track, so we really don't need to meet in big groups. Um, but we will continue to have our CDBG breakaway groups. The, um, next big thing with CDBG program is in May of twenty twenty-four. So this start being finalized throughout this month is our first hearing for the twenty twenty-four CDBG application. At this first meeting, uh, we welcome everyone, all public, that, anyone that has project request for this year's application. The city gets around three hundred thousand dollars, usually around two hundred and eighty thousand dollars can be used for a community development project to address blight or public service. There's a lot of different recreation. There's a lot of, uh, projects that you can apply for. So, uh, stay aware for that. That will post in our Facebook page, and you can find details on uniontownredevelopment.com. The twenty twenty-four CDBG competitive application is still pending. We hope to also submit this later this year. I have three project updates for the quick glance, uh, at our, at our existing program. Lemon Street Playground and Pavilion, the construction's pretty much complete. There's a few things wrapping up, some finalized payrolls, signage. And, um, we will be holding an opening for that park once we get to the point where we're ready to do that. I'm really looking forward to our demolition projects. Eighty and eighty-two is the first on the list, which are the two buildings right beside of Lemon Street Park. We would really like to have those down before we invite all public to, to the area. Um, and in addition, we'll do Fifty-five Lennox, Eighty-four Murray, Thirty-nine Winona. They all have environmental reviews and pending valuation certification. They all have environmental reviews and pending valuation certification. We hope to have those down this, uh, this summer. A new project update is code enforcement. For some time this past year, we had to modify the program slightly, and we put on hold code enforcement because the, uh, Department of Community Economic Development wouldn't allow you to use your programming for code enforcement if you didn't have a housing component. So we were actually going to have to change all of that. However, I announced last meeting that we did receive the award for the Housing Rehabilitation Fund, so that means that we have a housing component now. And so that means we can use it for code enforcement. So there's around thirty-seven thousand dollars allocated for code enforcement. We look forward to working with City Council and their process that they're, they're moving forward with the new employee to iron out different training and a different process that's eligible under the CDBG program. Other funding underway for modifications is still the Calvary Methodist Playground, Grant Street Improvements, State Theater, and One Voice, One Community Tutoring Program, pending state approval. We held our Sewage and Transportation Meeting, and I did send a follow-up. I want to, uh, make everyone aware of a meet, an upcoming meeting, which dates will be shared. It's called the Public Participation Panel. Everyone is welcome to attend those meetings to make comments about streets, specifically streets that are owned by PennDOT. So we will attend that meeting. Um, it, the comments received goes into Southwest Pennsylvania Commission, and they develop a transportation improvement program. And so they put you on a list that says, hey, this state route needs paved, or other project that needs to be handled. Maybe there's a dangerous place on the state route that you would like to comment on. You can do that at this meeting. More details to come, but that's something being discussed on our Sewage Transportation Meeting follow-up. And of course, we continue to review sewage projects. Brushing over, our environmental review is underway for the home rehabilitation dollars that was recently awarded. We are awaiting what we hope to be award for blight dollars in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars that was submitted through the Fair Program to focus on blight remediation. We have two properties underway. We are kicking off a new marketing for adjacent landowners and public listing for all the properties that we have available. So we've incorporated a Google Workspace App Sheet to create a digital database of all the Redevelopment Authority properties. So you can actually go on our website and see all the properties that we have available, and, um, adjacent landowners can make bids. And, um, and moving forward, we'll do a little heavier marketing as well. The downtown Uniontown Business District, oh, I skipped one. Don't want to do that, I know everyone wants to hear all this. The Story Square Insurance Claim was approved. So the awning, I know the awning's not in great shape over at Story Square. The awning insure, uh, the insurance claim was approved recently, so we are going to try to move that as quick as we can. It did take some times putting quotes together, bidding it out, and, um, getting estimates and things like that. So we really hope that it doesn't affect our Story Square Concert Series, but it may. But we'll adjust accordingly. Summer St- uh, Square Series is June through August, and the Third Thursdays will be a larger event. We still are encouraging, uh, vendors that would like to participate in that event, nonprofit agencies that want to have booths. On uniontownredevelopment.com, Story Square, backslash Story Square, you can see, uh, the information and register for that event. We're still looking for vendors. Downtown Uniontown Business District, we're pursuing the Keystone Community Designation that's looking at the downtown business district, the central business district. And I wanted to mention Christmas in July. July twenty-fifth, a group of interns and also a, uh, Christmas in the Square Committee is going to kick off the inventory of all of our, um, Christmas decorations and start planning for Christmas in the Square. If anyone would like to participate in planning for Christmas in the Square, if you had ideas last year, please reach out and you can, um, you could possibly be on the committee or even attend the meeting. So we encourage you to do that. Comprehensive plan is still under review for the Planning Commission. Those, um, meetings are tentative, um, we've not had quorum for about four months. Landlord Registration Program, we had a really excellent, I feel was excellent landlord event on March twenty-sixth. Um, we held that at Venue Sixty-Seven. We had a lot of great comments. Um, we're not moving, uh, quickly here, we would like to get comments and adjust the ordinance and, um, really consider how this is going to work for landlords and the community and the Redevelopment Authority to administer such a program. If you have comments on any of the landlord ordinance changes, you can reach out to our office. This goes hand in hand with code enforcement time allocations, which will be incorporated under that program. We've already discussed the blight remediation, uh, planning process. Thank you for setting up that task force, look forward to our next steps there. Besides that, we hope to meet with Guy Reschenthaler soon to be part of our welcoming to legislators. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal, and thanks for all your hard work also. Chief Con.
How we doing?
Good to see you.
Good to see you. All right. Hi, everybody. Uh, start out the report for the Union Town Fire Department, uh, by outlining the incidents we responded to in the month of March, two thousand twenty-four. It was a pretty busy month, as usual. Eleven fire-related incidents, these include three building fires, two trash fires, um, and six smoke scares, but fortunately, no active fire occurring. Uh, we had twenty-five rescue-related incidents, twelve of those being motor vehicle collisions, uh, three of those were with injuries. One was a vehicle collision resulting in entrapment to where we had to extricate the victim. Uh, nine lockout or gain access for the EMS, EMS crews, uh, two extrications of ill or injured persons from building, and one ring removal. Uh, we had eleven hazardous condition incidents, these included one carbon monoxide incident, uh, three gas leaks, four power lines down, two electrical emergencies involving electrical equipment, uh, in a building, and, uh, we had one building collapse. Had five service-related incidents, these included three general public service incidents, uh, one lockout, and one cover assignment for another fire company. We had seventeen fire alarm activations, and we did four public fire education and fire prevention details. These also, as always, include, uh, pre-incident planning, building familiarity station for our crews as well. Also, moving on to the training conducted or taken by personnel for the month of March, uh, pretty good numbers again. We had eighty-one point five man-hours of training, either conducted or taken by our personnel. So very proud of our folks for doing that, going out and learning their craft. Uh, moving on to apparatus and equipment updates, uh, Orange and Three recently had some warranty work done by, by the manufacturer, and it also completed its, uh, annual PA vehicle inspection and, uh, comprehensive maintenance. So we're good to go on that. The next one, I believe, is due next month, or engine number two. Um, we did have an urgent repair, uh, involving the air system on our ladder truck, so thank you for council, to, uh, council for that. All is well with that now. Um, also, and as Councilman Billy had, uh, reported on, the resolutions that you voted on tonight, we do have annual testing requirements as mandated for our industry, uh, standard, which is National Fire Protection Association. Um, that free, kind of frees us up to go ahead and start scheduling those. Uh, most of those will begin around summer, uh, including into the, uh, late fall. So, uh, thank you, folks, for voting and approving that. Just as far as some miscellaneous things, have some really good things to announce. A lot going on with the department, and it's kind of really exciting. Uh, one thing that we're getting involved in is we have formed a partnership with the American Red Cross for the, uh, Sound, Sound the Alarm Smoke Detector Campaign. Um, and this involves smoke detector, uh, smoke detector, uh, getting a little tongue tied there, sorry about that. Installations for folks who might need those. Those can be pre-arranged through the Red Cross. You can call this number, eight-three-three, three-one-five, zero-eight-eight-two, and make arrangements for a smoke detector install. That's going to take place on April thirteenth, but we're hoping to make that a, well, excuse me, an ongoing thing, though. So, uh, it's pretty exciting. You know, we're, we're kind of looking forward to that. Last month had reported on the, uh, residential, residential NOx boxes being available too. So I'd like to re- remind our citizens that those are available. You can obtain those applications at Central Fire Station, either for the residential or the commercial NOx boxes. Um, you know, again, highly recommend them, there's a little bit of a cost involved with that, but, uh, you know, the, the cost, you know, the, the benefit far outweighs the cost, though. So it's definitely a recommended thing. Um, if you want to check into that a little bit further, please give us a call or stop down at the station at any time. I'd like to give a couple thank yous. Number one to the, our Union Town Walgreens, they donated thirty-six cases of drink and water for our personnel in an effort to keep our personnel hydrated on our emergency incident, uh, emergency scene incidents. And this is really, really important, especially with the warmer months coming up. So, uh, thank you to Walgreens for doing that, that's very much appreciated. Also, I'd like to thank a number of folks. We recently had a memorial service, uh, to honor our two line-of-duty deaths within the department over our history. And it was a really, really nice service, so I'd like to thank the following folks. Reverend Pete Malik, uh, the Penn Highlands Teams for Crace, uh, Union Town Clergy Association, Union Town High School Bible Club, Fire Chaplain Ed Zadlak of the New Haven Hose Company in Connelsville, and of course, Mayor Gerke. Mayor, thank you for coming out and participating in our, uh, service and ceremony. This was held on the anniversary of the hundred and tenth year of the passing of Voight-Leclerc, one of our folks who unfortunately lost their life in the line of duty. So, uh, thanks to everyone that was involved with that. It was really, really nice and very much appreciated. And then lastly, I always, uh, close with the same thing. Reverend, what's tonight, I'm going to put you on the spot. Bingo. Yeah, that's right. Six forty-five, uh, doors are open right now, I think the early bird jackpot's up tonight. So, uh, any of you folks that are bingo people, come on over, we'll be glad to have you.
Chief, real quick, real quick, chief, uh, in the report, it, it, one covered assignment for another fire company?
Yes, sir.
Which, which company was it we threw municipal aid?
Um, I believe that one was Formington, it was a standby for them. Um, you know, we did, we did provide some mutual aid from town to town, north and south Union Township Fire Company.
Extremely important.
Manila and, uh, you know, and vice versa, so I believe that one was for standby for Formington.
Yep. One other thing, one other thing I wanted to add into is the Walgreens donating the cases of water. Today I was at Walgreens, and anyone can go up, uh, at the register, uh, they're, they're asking for, for the purchase of the water to donate. So if anybody in the city is frequenting Walgreens, please purchase, uh, a case of water so that can be donated to, to the department for this emergency scene. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Councilman Billy, appreciate that. Yeah, it's very important that he work for folks hydrated, you know, so that's, it's a big, uh, big cause of fire crater injuries, even deaths. So, uh, yeah, definitely, so thank you for giving us that plug, and thank you to Walgreens for that as well. Um, I think that's all I have, does anybody have any questions, comments, or anything? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, chief.
Thanks, folks.
Union Town Police Department, Chief DeWitt.
Evening, everyone.
Chief.
So during the month of March, the Union Town Police Department responded to seven hundred and fifty-three calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls included eighteen vehicle accidents, four assaults, seven frauds, twenty-three welfare checks, thirty-eight domestic, five, thirty-eight domestics, sorry, five assist fire calls, twenty-four disorderly conducts, thirty-nine traffic complaints, fifteen emergency medical assists, twenty assist other police, fourteen harassments, again, another important number that I'm proud of, two shots fired calls, thirty-four alarms, sixteen thefts, two public intoxications, eighteen animal complaints, fifty-nine suspicious persons, activities, vehicles, or, and one overdose. Officers made a total of, uh, forty-four criminal arrests, issued thirty-one non-traffic citations, and one hundred and sixteen traffic citations. We also conducted, uh, vehicle foot patrols of the city parks, of the Sheepskin Trail, and the parking garage as needed. During the, uh, month of March, code enforcement opened thirty-seven new cases. Of those thirty-seven cases, thirty were closed, and seven of them are being carried over into April. I can tell you from my perspective, the full-time code enforcement position, I'm glad you guys voted on this, this is a need for the city. A great need. I've been the chief now for two and a half years, I've been with this department for almost fourteen. This city could use five full-time code enforcement officers. There is so much work, uh, for code to get done. You're, I, you've heard me say this over and over, but we're putting a two-by-four into Mississippi River, hoping to stop the water flow, right? It's not going to happen. But the more blocks that we can add, the better we can handle this and turn on the, the tide of this city around, to at least help our property values out, which will then help the city in the long run prosper. Mayor, Council, any questions? Thank you all, have a good evening.
Thank you, chief. Director of Public Works, Trace, do you have anything? Okay, very good.
So, uh, before, I have a little bit to talk about before we go, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Uh, you know, just to kind of start talking in the future, uh, we have, uh, the railroad ties that need to come up on Beeson. Uh, we are going to need to start that process of removing those tracks, drawing down on that line item that we had, uh, in the budget for the removal of the rails. Uh, we, we also, as council, we need to meet with, uh, Arthur Capella, uh, with the Fayette County, uh, with, with Fayette County Planning and Zoning, also with the commissioners. Uh, we have two grants, last year, um, we applied for the SMART grant, which was in a, in the area of three hundred thousand dollars. Since then, the county has extended its search for grants, uh, which, with the two grants that were approved, total around one point seven million dollars for the city. This is going to be for the Sheepskin Trail, going from border to border. Uh, I was told this includes two bridges. Uh, this is something that, uh, they're in the process right now with Gibson Thomas through the planning. So right now, we are in the process, we also have to be in that same process because when they start to do this work in two thousand twenty-five, the city also has to be ready. And how I mean by ready is, is we need to start looking at sidewalk reconstruction. We also need to start looking into, uh, traffic devices that are also going to be, uh, trail-friendly going through the city. Right now, we have the Penn Street light, and we have a quote that's, uh, uh, I, I think you folks have seen the emails. If not, we'll talk more about that, but it's, it, it's a lot. So if we could try to, to talk with the county and get a better, a better understanding of exactly what our parameters are with this grant, this one point seven million. Uh, you know, I'd like to find out, I'd like to start getting in the planning process of that. So, uh, in the meantime, I'll have the intern clerk reach out to the county, give us a meeting set up. This is a meeting where I believe that, because no decisions will be made, this is a meeting that we can all get together and will not be a violation of the essential. I think it's extremely important that we start now with this planning because, uh, you know, uh, the mayor, uh, this is before Council Winfrey and myself had come on, the railroad had allocated, had given the city, uh, money to do that process. Now we have to finish that up. We also have to look, and why I want to focus on street, you know, the street reconstruction, the sidewalk reconstructions, because also if, and I, I need this, we need this meeting so we can become more familiar with the exacts, is that there may be, uh, restriction on exactly what that money can be done because it's for trails. So we need to find out how much money we have to allocate for payment. And then we also have to find out, is that, if, can we allocate that money through the highway fund? And, and is that allowable? Uh, we do have, uh, and it's a shrinking amount of the ARPA money left. That is the, we need to use that, those projects for, the infrastructure projects like that. I had touched base on code enforcement earlier, I, I think it's best, especially this is going to be the move for next year, is completely put that under the umbrella of, uh, of the police department and solely under the, uh, direction of the mayor. Couple things for next meeting that, that I'm going to be wanting to get on the meeting. Street painting is already under a line, uh, budgeted into the, into the police department budget. I want to get the street painter also moved completely into that as well. I want to get the street painter also moved completely into that as well, so that oversight will be done by the mayor and the chief of police. I'm not looking to fill any other positions. I think we know what we're talking about over there. We were going to get into promotions in that certain department. I, I'm not interested in, in seeing the promotions. What I'm interested in is, is getting qualified people. We, many times in the past, we have received applications. And I know for a fact that there was an application that was submitted and also tracked to see where it went. And this didn't go anywhere. This person, I have this application, and I'm not going to put, I'm not going to put those names out there of exactly who it is, but I'm sure that people that are in the know on council and that work for the city know exactly what I'm talking about. But I look at this application, and, and Councilman, I'll share this, this application with you, because I know for a fact that you didn't see it. So we let extremely qualified people slip through, and, and the reason is because those people are more qualified than we are. And it's very short-sighted for the city when, when we are overlooking extremely qualified people because people that we employ may feel inferior. And I know I'm getting, getting a little blunt with that and sound really aggressive, but I really want my message to resonate, okay? We have very qualified applicants that come in through, for the street department and the sewage department. And I do not want to see this in the future be tossed like it was. Where the issues we have, and you, we have all seen the expenditures that we had recently. We had a $61,000 bill. Why? Because we can't do the work ourselves. Okay, that's an issue. And the reason we can't do the work is because we have people that are retiring. And we're not, we're not supplementing those openings with qualified applicants. That's something that I would like to work with. Folks are on and moving forward. I know for everybody out there, it's a lot of, I don't understand what he's talking about, but please understand that there are a lot of people in the city that know exactly what I'm talking about in that matter. And I will be following up on that. When directions, when directives are given by a member of council, and most importantly, the mayor, and when those directives are given and are not followed, just because there were resignations and departures from certain top admin positions in the city does not mean that the operation of the city changes. And I'd like to make clear that, yes, the employees of the city help operate, they are the ones that help operate the city. The city operates because of our employees. But in no business should the employees feel like they run this. There's a group of members of Chamber of Council that are here, and that's who run council. That also is a message that, that will resonate as well. And I understand that people out in the audience and people that are also watching are not going to understand that, but I promise you, the people, certain people, they understand.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Any other comments this evening? It's time for public comment. Before we get started, limit your comments up to three minutes and be aware of everyone else's time. So at this time, we'll take public comment, if there is any. If not, that's all I have.
One more thing, I'm sorry. Very important, cameras. Like, we're all going to see this information coming up for, for next month, maybe as another RFP.
Cameras speaking.
We know exactly where those issues are. We, we put a lot of investment to see that get on a daily basis, get nipped at. That I'd like to address as well.
You're speaking, you're speaking of cameras in the parking garages.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown. The council hereby adjourns at 6:14 PM to meet May 2nd, 2024, at 5 o'clock PM. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey? Mayor Gerke?
Yes. Thank you all for attending.